Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the June East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Beriantos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Here.
John Massengill.
Here.
James Mulkey.
Monique Presses.
Here.
Steve Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item two, the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Trainer.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, board members, community. Tonight I have some of our art students that have participated in the VAS contest. I know y'all can't see it, but in front up here, there's some of their artwork up here. So hopefully during break, y'all get a chance to come and look at some of their winning artwork that was presented this year. I'm going to bring up Sierra Daley, Felicia Vasquez, and Lucio Mata to lead us in the Lucero Mata, to lead us in the pledge and then prayer.
Can anyone, everyone stand and bow their heads? Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you, we ask your blessings on tonight's meeting. Guide our hearts and our minds to spirits of fairness, right through and speech. Impact your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. We ask that you guide our district leadership, allow them to provide for our community, staff, families, and most importantly, our students whom you service. We ask them to also to allow us to plan for next school with humility. Be attentive to the needs of our students and implement to passion and grace. In your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated.
Ms. Gonzalez is also here from Legacy, one of our art teachers, to talk a little bit about the vase competition and some of the other students that participated. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Gonzalez.
I have been a sponsor for this district for the middle school level vase since probably 2001. And yes, I know I only look like I'm 29, but the kids, we had 41 entries this year from Legacy, and our school sponsored the event. We split because the event's so huge. And so watching it grow. Out of those 41 entries, we had 36 win medals, the superior medals, which you can see the girls wearing. They range in all kinds of sculpture. There's paintings up here, photography. I had graphic design, drawings. Lucero did. Oil pastel, it was oil pastel, right. And they learned that they have to push themselves harder for the visual arts scholastic event. And it's vase, not VAS, or not uppity. So it's just normal vase. And they did. They really had to work really hard. Sierra picked two projects, and hers were really tough. And she put a lot of stress on me and added some more gray hairs, so I don't look 29 anymore. But they did a really good job. Thank you.
I like this time for the parents of our students to stand up and be recognized. The parents of the young ladies could stand up and recognize them. I want to thank them for all that they do for the community and their kids. Take that opportunity. And board, I want to thank y'all for the opportunity tonight to open up this meeting, summertime meeting. So it was a very exciting time for us to get to present this evening. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trainer. We appreciate that. And thank you for bringing those exceptional students here to start our evening off right tonight. All right, we're going to move to awards and recognitions.
Trustees, once again, we've got several teams of students representing our FFA program. As usual, another banner year. So Ms. Colas, or actually, Mr. Pianzik? Nice tie.
I did have help from Ms. Stowinski over here getting me dressed further when I got here.
She did a good job.
I thanked her too, because my wife hadn't made it home yet to take care of me, so. Good evening, President Bryant, members of the board, Mr. Toscano. It's always great to come here and get our, recognize our students that have had a successful year. In the fall, we came to y'all with two state champions. We come back tonight with another state champion, and this one will qualify to go on to the national contest. We had numerous teams that qualified for the state, and I'm going to start with and call Mr. Kimpin up and let him recognize his teams.
Thank you, Mr. Pianzik. Sorry. That was good. I had the pleasure of working with two state qualifying teams this year, the livestock team and the dairy cattle team. The dairy cattle team ended up ninth in state. There's only one team member here. Why don't I have Coy, Deco, and Caitlin Kimpin come up here to the front right now so they can be recognized. Caitlin was a member of the dairy cattle team. Her teammates that aren't here today were Crystal Zigman, Logan Sessler, and Rebecca Benoy. Caitlin was also a member of the livestock team along with Coy, and so was Crystal Zigman. And the other team member that couldn't be here tonight is at girl state, and that was Taylor Hamilton. And like I said, the dairy cattle team ended up ninth in state, and the livestock team ended up eighth. They did a real good job. Thank you, Mr. Pianzik.
We had several other teams, and again, we advanced through competition. One of our teams that doesn't have to advance but goes straight to state, and they competed in a contest that had more teams than ever, so that was exciting. I'll call up our food science and technology team, Shannon Zients, Madison Hobidir, Ashley Hunt, and Brianna Coleman, and they were sixth overall at the state contest. And this one actually has a team activity where they prepare a product for presentation and try to sell it to the judges and tell their marketing plan. The next one, we traveled all over the state, you know, in hopes of winning the state contest, and we came up just a few points short, but very proud of these four individuals who represented us at state. Carson Golson, Garrett Mahowski, Kay Doogie, and then Kelsey Walla, who was third high overall, I think for the second time in a row at the state contest, right? Now, the last group is going to leave me without somebody to follow up with, because I've had these three groups, these, this team, all four of them for the last three years to travel with, and we figured we traveled probably close to 5,000 miles in the attempts to win the state contest. And we were up and down all year long, but we, I told them there's only one that counted, and they, they got it together. We'll call up Lane Rial, who was first high individual, Trent Stowinski, who was second high, Matt Lozano, 10th, and Brianna Tully was 11th. And they will compete in October at the national contest. We moved to Indianapolis last year, so they will actually go to the Purdue University for their national contest, and we're excited about getting to travel. I want to go back to Hannah's Haunted Acres and take them on a tour of some enchanted things up there. So we're very proud of all our kids. Let's get them all back up here, all the kids, and get back to our big picture. And so, and again, parents, we thank you for your support, letting us travel with these kids all over the state of Texas. It's always a fabulous thing. So all the parents that are here of these kids tonight, would y'all please stand? Some of y'all already standing to take pictures, but you're not. It's your time here. And we hope to be back in October, the November meeting, to get these recognized, and we appreciate the school board's support year after year for allowing us to travel and do the great things with these kids and supporting us at the national contest. We surely appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, I must say, it's our pleasure to be able to support, because that's all about, about all we can do. Y'all are the ones that work with the kids every day, and we appreciate the parents, the support of the students, and we very much appreciate the effort of the students. Everything they do is over and above their classroom work, so all of these things take a lot of time. I think they're learning some exceptional skills for their, the next journey that they have, but congratulations to all of you, to all of the parents, and you represent us very, very well, and we appreciate that. So, thank you. With that, we're going to take a short recess, so that those of you who need to go home and do homework or grade, no, wait a minute, it's summer. So, all right, we're going to take a short recess and let y'all who would like to leave leave, and then we're going to come back and conduct the rest of our business. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started again, and if y'all would allow me, I'd like to move item 7A to this point in time so that we can move on and allow our guest to get to his next appointment. So we have consideration and adoption of an order by the Board of Trustees of the East Central Independent School District authorizing the issuance of East Central Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2017. So, Mr. Toscano, if you would, please, sir.
Sir, Mr. Bryant, trustees, the draft order is in your packet, beginning on page 33. Again, this will be the second and last bond sale from the bond program, which was approved last May. And Victor Coroga from Frost Financial is here to present that to the board.
Thank you. Honorable President, members of the board, Mr. Toscano, thank you for having me here this evening. For the record, my name is Victor Coroga with Frost, and we have the honor of representing the district as your financial advisors. We prepared a very brief presentation for you here to explain that long agenda item that you're considering this evening. But if you go to the first page after the cover sheet, just to recap and remind you as to what the voter communication was when we requested their approval to issue up to $86.1 million in bonds, we told them that the projects would include a new performing arts center, additions and renovations to the elementary and intermediate schools, and a new elementary and intermediate school. When we spoke about taxes, we told them that the impact or the cost for this bond program of $86.1 million would be anywhere up to 16 to 17 cents, but that we would break it up over a two-year period. So as Mr. Toscano indicated, we sold half of the bonds last year, and now we're asking your permission to sell the other half here coming next week. If you go to the next page, this is the progress of the 2016 bond program. As I indicated earlier, we had a successful bond sale last summer in July, $43.05 million. That was a 25-year repayment term, and we locked in a wonderful rate of 2.69%. And I wanted to stand here and kind of manage expectations. Last summer was pretty much like the low in terms of interest rates. Interest rates have risen since that time, particularly since the presidential election, but they're still, when you put it in perspective, historically at low interest rate levels. And so it's still a good time to issue bonds, and so, but I expect us to be near that range. We also had eight bidders last year, which is a good indication that there's a lot of financial institutions. I recognize that the district is doing well financially and wanted to invest their funds into these bonds. So that leaves us with $43.05 million in remaining bonds to be sold. Based off of the revised projections, we expect that the overall INS tax impact to cover this bond program instead of 16 or 17 cents, it's going to be closer to 11 cents. And I can't take credit for that. That is all really based off of the higher-than-projected property values and growth in your property values that the district has been experiencing in the past couple of years. So because of your property value's growing, that's an inverse relationship, your tax rate gets to go down. And so we're about five or six cents below what we told the taxpayers in terms of the tax rate impact for this bond program. The next page, this evening, all you're doing is you're allowing me, my staff, and the administration to move forward with this sale. We're not locking in interest rates just yet, but what you're doing is you're delegating the authority to sign the final documents to lock in the interest rate to Mr. Toscano or Ms. Burns. Based off of your action this evening, we're scheduled to competitively issue these bonds next Thursday on the 22nd. At that point, we would lock in the interest rate, and you would delegate the authority to Mr. Toscano to sign the final documents and hold that interest rate for the district. Based off of those two actions, we're scheduled to close this bond transaction and deliver those funds to you via an electronic wire on July 19th. The last page, ladies and gentlemen, is just a term sheet. This is basically just a summary of the transaction. It'll be structured just like your existing bonds, where we're making semi-annual interest payments and annual principal payments. These bonds are going to be supported by the Permanent School Fund Guarantee through the Texas Education Agency. That allows you to issue bonds using the highest and safest available rating of AAA. You're basically using the state's credit to issue those bonds to try to get you a good interest rate. But the district itself has a very strong credit rating. In fact, Moody's, one of the two rating agencies, major rating agencies that rates the district, through this process, we provided them updated financials, and the district received a two-notch bond rating upgrade. And so basically, AAA is the highest, then you have a double A+, and then a double A. That's where the district now is, at a double A. So you're basically two notches from the best available rating for bonds. And so I wanted to congratulate the board and the district for the prudent decisions they've been making in order to elevate to that level. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
As I was looking at the revised projection rate is six cents below what was communicated to voters, I was just, I was wondering if we're going to communicate this information to the community, to get this information.
Yeah, we're not going to break our arm, patting ourselves on the back, but we'll pat ourselves on the back. Because we won't, nobody else will.
I know we haven't had any trouble getting bonds passed, but I think that helps a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think the next issue of the School Bell Times has either already gone to press or is already closed, but the one following that, we will, of course, have a bond update, and we'll make sure that that little tidbit is front and center. Good, good job. Thank you. Anybody else?
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the order authorizing the issuance of East Central Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2017, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds as presented.
Thank you. We have a recommendation by the superintendent to adopt the bond order as presented. Chair Lunt, entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate y'all leveling me up in the schedule. Thank you very much.
Not a problem. Happy we could accommodate. All right, we'll, excuse me, we'll now return to our regular agenda. I understand there's no, there are no public comments this evening. Moving on to item five, we have a public hearing for optional flexible school day program annual report.
Sir, Mr. Bryant, trustees, per statute, we're to have a public hearing to take comments if anyone was interested regarding optional flexible school day program. As a reminder, this is a program that's been approved by the commissioner for several years now, and we've been participating for several years. It's specifically for students in grade nine through 12th grade, and its intent is to provide flexible hours and flexible daily attendance options, particularly for students who are over age or struggling to meet graduation requirements. We have found much success over the years in ensuring that students graduate, often graduate on time, and us retaining students who are highly at risk of dropping out and ultimately completing their high school credential. Later in the consent agenda, you are all probably aware that we have next year's application included in the consent agenda, and in that consent agenda item, which I believe is on page 116, there's also some data in there about the number of students served, how they did, and of course, we'd be happy to share any of that detailed information with you tonight if you, if you are interested. We're prepared to talk about that as well.
So as this is a public hearing, I need to offer time at the podium to anyone who wishes to speak to this agenda item. Anyone want to speak to the public hearing for optional flexible school day program? All right. We will move on to agenda item six, superintendent's reports, the personnel report.
Trustees, in your miscellaneous packet, I've included a document that is actually the same document that's in your electronic packet with some additional clarification. If you'll recall, June and July are very, very busy times in our HR department, very busy times in all school districts, because that's when there are transitions. The numbers in there obviously look elevated compared to previous months. Again, that's very normal, but I thought that I would give you some additional information about the nature of those specific transitions, as well as how they compare in number to previous years. They're very comparable to where we are usually this time of year in terms of number of staff that are coming and going. Most of those positions, I'm very happy to report, have been filled already, but any of those items in that personnel packet for this month, that you have any additional questions or would like additional information, give me a call and we'll get that to you.
I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'm reading this thing, is it status and da-da-da?
Mm-hmm.
What is, what's the status, Spain?
Oh, good question, Mr. Garza. So those are the, if you'll recall, we've, we've been, we've received a grant through, what's this?
Region 13.
Region 13, where for about seven years now, we, several years now, we've had visiting teachers from Spain who teach in our dual-language program. And so they're on a work visa, and they can only stay for three years. So most of these folks have, their term has expired, and so they need to return back to Spain. There are a couple who had some personal family matters to attend to that they had to leave possibly early, but that's what Spain is.
I thought you had asked these folks to not only leave, but go all the way to Spain.
Go all the way to Spain. No, these folks were actually fantastic and fantastico.
Well, when you get rid of people, you get rid of them, right?
Thank you. I'm telling you, baited. Hook, line, and sinker.
All right. Our next report is 2016-2017 Curriculum Year End Report.
Trustees, the report is in your electronic packet. It begins on page 16. You'll see included in this report information that is specific to the many curricular programs that also includes professional development as well as other curriculum initiatives. And at this time, Ms. Hertz will provide an overview for the board.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. As Mr. Toscano said, you do have a report in your packet, but I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. I do want to talk a little bit about our department goals we had this year. It was really, aside from our goals that we have related to the district goal and performance objectives, we did also have some goals based on surveys that have been done, mostly centered around communication. So if you'll notice the 2016 survey results, we have two things there, communication up, which that question had to do with my senior manager is aware of what's going on in the district, and then communication down had to do with, I feel like I'm well-informed in important decisions that are made by the district. So in the communication up area, last year, as a department, we were actually 12% below the district average, and then this year, we were 37% above the district average. So a pretty significant increase there on senior management being aware of what's going on in the district. And then communication down, last year, we were 5% below the district average, and then now this year, 5% above the district average. So it's an increase there also on keeping people well-informed. So that last one was on that workplace dynamic survey that we do at the end of the year. This one was related to the mid-year survey that we do with all of the campuses complete this. And so we split it up into all of our kind of sub-departments that we have within the district, and our goal this year was to improve communication by 10%, the level of communication that they feel that they are receiving. So most of our sub-departments did improve. Assessment, you can see, improved by 11%. Just a 1% increase in the avid college and career readiness area, had a slight dip in bilingual ESL. CNI, that would include like all of our curriculum specialists that we have, our curriculum coordinator, those folks, and so that increased 75% to 96%. Federal programs, you know, our goal was to improve 10%, but that would have had to get to 100%. So we're pretty happy with the 3% increase there. And then special ed improved from 45% all the way up to 81%. So overall, between the two different surveys, we're feeling pretty positive about the increases we've had in the level of communication that our people feel like we're providing. Okay, and then also, in your written report, there's a lot more information about this, but briefly, and within the content areas, literacy, we have continued to support the balanced literacy model. We've had, been having consultants come in for the last four years, providing training to the teachers specifically on the Reader's Writers Workshop model. This year, we started kind of shifting a little bit the type of support that they had. Instead of direct training, we've had the consultants go in and observe classrooms and provide coaching to the teachers and giving them feedback. We also, this year, started specifically supporting the dual-language teachers in Reader's Writers Workshop with a consultant that specializes in that area. In math, we brought a consultant in specifically for elementary math to really work on the content, making sure that teachers understood the standards that were for their grade level, understand exactly what level they should be getting to with the kids. We also had a math vertical team that worked on very similar things, worked on performance assessments, and worked on proficiency scales to make sure that the teachers knew what level they needed to be teaching the students. We brought in this year an instructional model for science and social studies. We've had it for literacy and math for a while, so this was our first year with our instructional model for those two areas, and then also, within the last couple of weeks, we've been doing some curriculum writing in those areas. And then STEM isn't necessarily a content area, it's really embedded within the other content areas, but I do want to point out some of the things we're doing in the STEM area. It is embedded within the science classes, but we also have robotics for all levels. We had the electric car this year, and we had a lot of success with that. We had the electric car this year and we had a lot of success with that, supporting the engineering area. We've been doing a lot with coding. We've increased our computer programming classes at the high school. We've got some new things like video game design, mobile app design. Even at the elementary schools, we participate in the Hour of Code and we have some of our high school students go down to the elementary, intermediate and middle schools and work with the kids on some basic coding. And so we've really been trying to give some more opportunities for the kids in the STEM areas. And then our program areas, our special program areas, we, in special education, still are partnering with Emergentree. That's our behavior support that we provide. That is one of our district performance objectives. And whenever they come and do the program evaluation, they consider 80% as being that you're implementing fully. And we did have in Tier One and Tier Two, 80%. And in redirection, we had 82%. Within life skills, we were a little lower, 67%, so we're still working on that. But we've come a long way in the last three or four years since we've been implementing Emergentree. And then our student support analysis process, that has to do with our inclusion in the classroom and really looking at individual students and what their needs are and what the best placement would be for those students. And we continue to improve on that process every year and work with the campuses on that. I'm not really going to say much about bilingual ESL because just in a couple of minutes, she's going to come and do her annual report on that. And then college and career readiness, we've done a lot this year to expand what is coming out of that office. We still have Avid. We've done a lot with service learning this year and we've even gotten some national recognition for what we've been doing. We've been doing work at the National Park, Big Bend, and also some state parks. And our plan is to expand service learning even to the elementary schools, having some projects with that. I've talked to you a little bit before about NEMCE. That's the National Math and Science Initiative. It's a grant we received. It's a three-year grant and the focus of it is to improve participation and performance in AP courses. So that's going to be a really big push at the high school starting this coming year. And in fact, we've already had some teachers going to training this summer, really wanting to up the level of rigor in our courses and get kids ready, prepared to be in AP so they'll feel confident in those classes and want to take the exam and be successful on it. We did have a GT task force that it's been meeting for about a year and a half and they've been working on some suggestions, recommendations for the GT program. One of those, we've already acted on. We will be having a GT facilitator at the intermediate level this coming year, which we haven't had that in a while. And so those students will have a pull-out program in addition to being clustered in their classrooms. So improving services for the intermediate level there. And then interns, last year, you know, we had five interns here in the district, students that were interested in different career areas that are connected to departments in the district. We actually have 10 this year, so we've been able to increase that, give our kids a chance to have a paid internship during the summer and get kind of a taste of a career area that they might have an interest in and have also done some coursework in. The campus improvement plan for instructional technology, we've changed that up a little bit in the last couple of years. We've changed the timeline for that. What it is, the campuses look at their technology needs and come up with an improvement plan for that and then it is embedded in their campus improvement plan. And the timeline is different on that now than it used to be. They used to do that at the beginning of the year, but we've switched that around where they now do that in the spring when we're actually working on budgets and working on the campus improvement plan so that it will all be aligned. Currently, we have summer ECICD going on. This is our second year with that as far as trying to put all the programs together kind of under one umbrella, enrichment programs, acceleration programs, academic support, also the athletic camps. And this year, they had online and face-to-face registration as an option. So trying to make that more accessible to people to get their kids registered. And then we do have the pre-K focus that you already are familiar with. But just to let you know, an update on that, we have been doing some site visits over to pre-K for SA so that our campus folks can get an idea of what their programming looks like so we can take the things that we like and put it in our own programs. We also did just get a grant through the city where we can buy some supplies, equipment. There'll be some training involved and it'll also help us pay for that class evaluation that we talked about, I believe the last time, to evaluate our pre-K programs. So we did just get notified about that. And then lastly, I just want to talk to you a little bit about the curriculum management plan that we were putting into place. We do have our executive director for CNI is attending the Curriculum Leadership Academy through Texas ASCD. She's actually there right now finishing up the last couple of days. And so through that, she's learned quite a bit about how to really look at your curriculum, evaluate your programs and how to put a plan in place for improvement. And so part of that was the curriculum audit. So all of our specialists went through and looked at all of our curriculum, every grade level, every subject area, and really looked at all the documents we have to see what we have available to the teachers so they could identify where we might have some holes and might need to work on it. So they've completed all of that and then now they're in the process of working on a three- to five-year plan of how to go about and how to prioritize, what are we going to work on first, what needs to be done, and plan that out for the next three to five years so we can have some, a really robust curriculum program. While we're doing that, we're also looking at our assessment program, making sure it's balanced, that we have quality assessments, all different types of assessments, the long-term, the short-term, the performance assessments, all of that. We're going to get some training for our staff, make sure we're able to write quality assessments. And all of this is really just based on focused support, looking at what we have identified as needs within the curriculum instruction and assessment areas and making a plan for improvement. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Lot of work. Anyone have any questions?
Question? I couldn't help but notice the, on the special ed report for the communication part, where last year, we had 45% and then this, this next year, this current year, 81%. That's quite impressive. What things did you put in place to jump, to almost double that communication?
Well, we did a little restructuring in the department. We did add an instructional specialist who goes out and works with the teachers in the co-teach settings and works directly with them in the classroom. We also added a behavior specialist that can focus on that area. And then we have our director and our coordinator. So we just kind of divided up the duties so they can focus on certain things and be out on the campuses, working with the teachers and the campus administrators. And I think a lot of that is what made the difference.
Well, obviously, that's reflected in the other parts of that. That was really impressive. Another thing I noted was even during the graduation, how a number of our students were in the National Spanish Honor Society. I'm probably not saying that correctly. But anyway, I was really impressed with that. And then I'm looking at the finalists and the other accolades for the bilingual department. So anyway, I was impressed with the number of students we had with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to the 2016-2017 bilingual dual-language program annual report.
Sir, Mr. President, as required by state statute, Dr. Claudia Garcia will present the board with an annual report of our bilingual dual-language program at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Buenas tardes. I'm going to do a brief report of just overall activities and how our program is changing, moving and growing. And so basically, what you have in front of you on the first slide is just the numbers that we have. One of the trends that we've been seeing every year is almost a 1% increase in English language learning population. And so that'll be reflected in some of the things that I'll be talking to you about. And so right now, our total district population is over 10,000, of course. Out of that, we have 9.8%, almost 10% of our population are ELLs and they're enrolled in the bilingual or ESL programs. And I'll be explaining that a little bit more. So I just wanted to give a quick overview of the program goals. So we have our dual-language program, which most of us are familiar with. And so the goal of that program is to not only include our English language learners who we have to serve by law, but also include any other student who wants to become biliterate. And I stress biliteracy, not just bilingualism, because we want them to be biliterate in all four domains of language and go beyond just speaking. Now, the ESL program also serves our English language learners, but the focus there is to acquire or attain English proficiency in the four domains, which is not only state law, but federal law. And one of the trends that we've been seeing with the growth, which I will address in another slide, is the fact that not only are we having English language learners who speak Spanish as another language, but we have a total of 12 languages now in our district. And so the dual-language program isn't always the best fit because it is Spanish immersion. And so we have to find a way to serve our students. And that's what we do through our ESL program. So just briefly, we do have, within the dual-language program, our dual-language one-way, which is at our pre-K program, which serves our English learner population. And then our two-way, like I explained, is now pretty much in the whole district, all five campuses at Elementary, Legacy, Heritage and East Central High School. And this past year, we shifted from a 90-10 model to an 80-20 model. And the rationale behind that was for a couple of reasons. One, we shortened the amount of minutes in the day. We wanted to make sure that the instructional time for English language development was still there. And also, because we have to make sure that the students are growing based on state requirements, we wanted to make sure that we had quality and quantity in the English language development time. Our ESL program is really the one that's growing right now. And in the past, we basically had ESL offered at middle school and high school. But I did want to bring attention to pre-K through fifth because like I mentioned, we have a lot of little ones coming in with another language other than English or Spanish. And so I gave some examples of some of the languages there. But one of the other challenges that we have right now is finding ESL-certified teachers that are able to teach in the elementary grades. And so we are working on making sure that we can not only recruit dual-language teachers, but ESL-certified teachers, pre-K through 12. And so that's one of the implications of our growing number. I really wanted also to highlight the hard work that our middle school and high school is doing in meeting the growing number of ELLs. They are very, have become very strategic about how they handle the master plan to make sure that these students are specifically scheduled with a teacher that is trained to work with English language learners, sheltered instruction being one of the strategies. And so we want to applaud that because it takes a lot of time and a lot of planning. They are also pushing and support, two to three times a day in the content areas. And in the case of our newcomers or students who are recent arrivals, they are also offered that opportunity to have an ESL class. So you see different layers of support, which many other districts don't do. But we're having that need and so we're trying to find the best way to serve them. And that's an area that we still have to work on and develop because it's grown so fast and it's changing. The other part that I wanted to report to you was our TALPAS, which is also our state assessment for measuring language growth. And overall, this is where we've seen a dip or a decrease. Overall, as a district, we saw a decrease of 3%. We did see some growth in three, in particular, three campuses at the high school, at Heritage Middle School and at Sinclair Elementary when compared to last year's results. And it kind of fluctuates from year to year and campus to campus, but we are very committed to really looking closely at the data and finding what exactly are the differences? What kind of support are we offering our teachers to make sure they can target and continue to grow our students in their linguistic attainment of English? And then again, in order to assure that, we want to assure that, we want to make sure that students, teachers are attending research-based professional development. Our partnership with Region 20 and the COOP is one of those big pieces. They offer us a lot of support. They tailor their professional development to our needs. And so that's one of our big partners, along with attending conferences or bringing some of our consultants in. And so basically, what we want to do to continue to grow in this area is to listen to the feedback that we get from teachers, offer coaching and resources, et cetera. And so again, these are just some of the examples or some of the descriptors of how we look at when we're choosing professional development. We wanted to make sure that it's research-based, it's targeted based on the needs, it's data-driven, looking at our data, it's ongoing, that we are able to have coaches that are able to model that, that it's relevant and that it's sustained in support over time. And at this point, I really want to thank you for allowing us to have a bilingual specialist, Ms. Letizia Garza. She has done a phenomenal job and it has made a big difference to our dual-language teachers to have someone out there that's also an expert in curriculum, but working specifically with English language learners and the dual-language programs. I did want to thank you all for that. And talk about Spain. Somebody brought up Spain a while ago. I just did want to give you a quick overview of what's been going on. This is our fifth year of receiving the Spain Visiting Teachers Program Grant. We've had, like I said, this is our fifth cohort. Our second cohort just finished their third, I mean, their, yeah, their third year. We do actually, this past, two years ago, they were offered an opportunity to extend a fourth and a fifth year. And this year, we have one teacher that is working on her fifth-year extension. Because when they come, they really love it here. But then there are circumstances where it's a family issue, illness, et cetera, where they have to return. But for the most part, you know, they really enjoy and feel very welcomed. A few of them came over the past couple of weeks just to thank the whole district and they told me to tell all of you how grateful they are and it was hard leaving their second home. But we're glad that they're going back and they're going to have some great things to share back in Spain, all over Spain, because they're from all over. And so this year was a third, like I said, I mean, this year, we have four new teachers that are coming in. The wonderful thing about growing a community is that the ones that are here or leaving, they already have cars, they already have where to move in, some of them are already registering their kids. So it's really evolving and it's become a big support system. So just to finish, some of the accolades that we'd like to share with you is again, this year, we graduated a third high school cohort of dual-language students. And these are students that started at Highland Forest in one Kender program. And so right now, our numbers are small. You know, the classes are hard to make at the high schools right now because there's so many choices they have, which is great, they have a big menu to pick from. But I can tell you, our numbers at the middle schools that are coming up already in the 60s and 80s and per campus. So it's coming, it's not on here, but we've had visits from Alamo Heights, from Northeast, from North Side, et cetera, just to come and look at the program. And it's always evolving and there's always room for improvement, but we feel that we are the trendsetters in that area. So basically, somebody mentioned the Spelling Bee. We did have finalists at the regionals again. We had our elementary place third place, about 20 students from throughout the region, outside of San Antonio, including middle school was sixth place and our high school student was third place. And so we are very proud of that. And the last thing I put there that I wanted to also celebrate is the fact that it's so competitive right now to find good dual-language or bilingual teachers. And for the first year in a while, we didn't have to ask for an exception from TA. We had all of our spots filled, where some of our friends across the way may have 20 to 40 spots not filled. So we're very lucky that we have a great human resources department and everybody partners together to recruit. And so we're working now on our And so we're working now on our ESL recruitment, but that's basically it. Thank you. Are there any questions? This is the first time I ever do this, and I say, why am I the only one from the whole scene? Any questions? I don't know.
Quick question. What type of support do you provide to parents that have ESL students? Because I know, Spanish was my first language, and my parent, my mother couldn't help me with my homework in English. So I'm just kind of curious about that.
That's a great question. We have offered multiple parent meetings. This year, for example, we tried to embed the support in what's already happening in the system. So we had a special populations fair where we had different community services come in and offer some general support. But we also had, for example, early in the spring, Dr. Machado Casas come from UTSE and talk about the importance of parental involvement. And so we were able to get a list of needs that they wanted, some of the questions were, how do I help them with preparing for the assessment? How do I help them if I don't speak the language, if I'm a dual-language parent? And then for ESL parents, that's a big area, because now we have parents that don't only speak Spanish and English, but we have other parents that have reached out to us, have gotten a few calls about, how do I help my student, we speak Vietnamese at home? So one of the things that I do, when it's more on the one-to-one requests, is I always go to Region 20 or my partners in other districts, because we have big districts in the city. And instead of reinventing the wheel, I try to get resources from there. But it's really trying to blend in what's already happening and not having things in isolation.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. All right, our next report is ESSA Consolidated Federal Grant Application.
Trustees, you may recall during President Obama's administration that he had voted into law the Every Student Succeeds Act. Acronym is ESSA. That replaced No Child Left Behind. That is the same federal entitlement program, which offers grant funding for school districts to receive some financial dollars from the federal government to enrich programs. These are reflected as Title I through Title IV. The critical point of emphasis here is that they can't, these dollars cannot be used to supplant local dollars, meaning that statute requires us to serve students. We have to serve those students with the resources and the funds that they need in order for that programming to serve them. And so we can only use these dollars to enrich that in addition to. So we file an application or complete an application every year. That application for this year's funding, round of funding, will be submitted by July 1st. And a copy of the entire application will be in my office for public viewing and for yours, if you're interested.
All right, any questions about that? Board update 108.
Trustees, in your miscellaneous packet, as is always the case when we receive these updates, is the Vantage Points, which is the briefing, which gives you a really nice, quick overview of those policy recommendations. There's very few in this particular update, but we are anticipating after the legislative session, which, as you all are aware, we're moving into a special session, which could become another special session. So who knows when the session will ever end? But when it does, it is always typical that we'll see some huge policy update recommendations. And so this one's relatively brief. So this is your first reading. And as always the case, if you have any questions, need additional information between now and next month, bring those to my attention and we'll certainly get that information to you.
All right, District Audit Report for Safety and Security.
Trustees, law requires districts to conduct a safety and security audit at least once every three years. This is a self-assessment, and it provides very critical information with regard to our efforts to continuously improve our emergency management process. Ms. Colas will present the board with an overview of this year's audit report at this time.
Great. Good evening, President Bryant, members of the board, Mr. Toscano. Our audit cycle over the last three years, we have actually conducted audits on all of our campuses annually. So the information that I have for you is based on surveys that we've given to staff members and parents and students every single year, including nurses, teachers, maintenance workers. Our head custodians fill out a safety survey. Our district audit report encompasses not only our day-to-day security and our day-to-day safety, that for all of our employees, it also includes our emergency management plans. So currently, the district and all campuses have multi-hazard emergency operations plans that address the four phases of emergency management, which is mitigation, which is the same as preparedness, response and recovery. So, or I'm sorry, mitigation, prevention, preparedness, response and recovery. And they are updated annually for our, not only the district, but at each campus. We have teams of people for the district and for each campus who are trained through FEMA in the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command Structure. So we work on that every single year. I'm going to go to the next page, because I'm just hitting the highlights, so we won't be here for too long. Campuses have conducted all of their drills as required by state law and district policy. The audit cycle, the, going back from 2011 to 2014, this last audit cycle, 14 to 17, we've done a lot of working on our access points in our campuses. We have changed the internal structure to where people have a single entry point, aside from the high school. It's a little hard to do there. But we have, to a great extent, increased safety and security for students and staff since our last audit cycle from 2011 to 2014. The district has invested resources, again, on enhanced visitor access control and reconfigurations, and also on the key swipes, the little where everybody has their, the tag on the back of their badge, and they can just swipe it and go in. They don't need a key. So the electronic keys, that's what they're called. We have upgraded cameras everywhere. We are currently working on central office to have cameras. So that's upcoming, and you'll hear more about that. And then our district crisis team, what we're going to be doing soon is we're going to be working with our non-instructional facilities, because in our audit, what we figured out is that we have emergency operations plans going on district level and campus, at each campus. But we don't have them at our non-instructional facilities, and that's something that we need to address. So this last semester, our non-instructional facilities did their first drill, fire drill and lockdown drill at each non-instructional facility. So we're going to be working on emergency operations plans with them this summer and this fall. So they will, each facility that we have will have an emergency operations plan, and we'll be conducting drills on a regular basis, just like our campuses do. So that's what's to come. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Have we seen any kind of an increase in complaints about getting into schools? Everybody pretty good with the work that we've done over the last few years to try and eliminate those access points?
So whenever we first started making everyone, you know, give over their ID and, you know, running their ID to make sure of who they were and checking everything, there was some upset. But in the last year, I think we've become, we've become more comfortable with our practices. We've relaxed that we've figured out were, you know, not very friendly, maybe. And we've sort of figured out a happy medium between welcoming our parents in and grandparents in, guardians in, and making them feel welcomed, and also maintaining a safe and secure environment. So we've had far fewer complaints this year than the years prior, whenever we first started.
So have you had anybody congratulate you on keeping their kids safer?
Absolutely. There are absolutely people who feel like, who thank us on a regular basis for what we've done, security-wise.
Great, great. Anybody else? Thank you. And then we have upcoming events.
Trustees, for just a moment, if you could take a look at the calendar in your packet. Couple of dates I want to point out. Tomorrow is the annual Reggie West Golf Tournament, which supports our social services. It is at Starkey Park, and that's in Seguin. Moving into July, the week of July 4th, the 4th is a holiday. We are on four-day weeks, 10-hour days. But for the week of the 4th of July, we'll be off on the 4th, work eight-hour days. And that Friday on the 7th, we will be open. Other than that, for the remainder of July, we will be closed on Fridays. On July 11th, again, mark your calendar if you haven't already done so, but we will have a special board meeting at 5:30 here in the boardroom. We will have dinner provided. And that primary agenda of that meeting is a budget workshop, our annual budget workshop. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on the 20th. And the last week of four-day work weeks is the last week of July.
Any questions? All right, and we will move into the second part of our agenda. We've already taken care of Agenda Item A. Agenda Item B is a discussion and possible action of Construction Manager at Risk Amendment Number One, portable setups at Salado.
Trustees, in your miscellaneous packet as well, we've added some content for you for this agenda item. So if you pull that out and take a look at that. This time, I'd like to call Mr. Selby up to discuss Amendment Package Number One.
President Bryant, Superintendent Toscano, board members. As you recall, we went through a process of having a war or a delivery method for construction of Phase Two of the bond program, which includes the additions and renovations to Salado Intermediate School, Harmony Elementary, Pecan Valley Elementary and Sinclair Elementary Schools. And you approved Joris General Contractors to be the Construction Manager at Risk for that, for those projects. Part of their responsibilities is to go out and to solicit proposals for work to be done. This first package was put out to market to, and Joris was able to bring proposals back in on June the 6th, I believe it was, of this year. And I would like to just point out that we have Carlos Constantino from LPA, our architect, lead architect, and also we have a whole crew from Joris here this evening. I said I wasn't going to introduce them, but I will, Mallory Otino, Justin Bendelay, Wes Ryan and Russell Seima. And I appreciate them all being here to answer questions that I may not be able to answer for you. In putting together that package, what we focused on were things that we need, we needed to go ahead and have underway before school started. And a lot of that would be involved in setting up and connecting our portables that we moved out of the construction pad areas at both Salado Intermediate School and at Sinclair Elementary School. We're also going to go ahead and get started on the new driveway for parent drop-off and pickup at Sinclair. And that will also involve adding a new fire hydrant to cover all the new additions and areas that we're going to have in the back of the school. And we're also going to need to have to move some playground equipment out of where those new additions are going. And so part of this Package One included moving the playground equipment and setting up new playground equipment in some areas. And I listed all of those for you in this agenda item to kind of give you an overview for this. At Salado Intermediate School, which is going to be one of the biggest challenges we have, we're going to go ahead and have them build a temporary access hallway through the existing building that's connected to the gym, so that once we start that new addition in the back, they have safe access into the gymnasium, because we're going to be adding on a building on either side of that gym complex. And so we're going to have to add a fire lane at Pecan Valley, move a fire hydrant, have some temporary parking, because we're going to have to take over part of the existing parking lot area. And so all of those things needed to be done either prior to school starting or very shortly after. And so we went ahead and had them put together this Package One, and as I said, went out to the market and got proposals. And that's where the team effort, if you recall when I explained the whole concept of Construction Manager at Risk, once you get that Construction Manager onboard, you develop a team between the district, the design consultants, in this case, LPA, and their team, and then, in this case, Joris as the Construction Manager. We went through and evaluated those proposals and determined what was the best value for the dollar for the district. Joris, in completing that evaluation, submitted a six-page proposal, which you have attached to your agenda item. And in that, they are proposing a guaranteed maximum price, which, and once again, that's part of the Construction Manager at Risk process. And by proposing this, what they're saying is that they're going to do that entire scope of work for no more than, here is proposed, $1,778,180. If for some reason the cost exceeds that amount, that's the at-risk part, they assume, they're responsible for those additional costs. If it comes in less than that, then the district benefits from that, any money that we didn't have to spend. They don't get to keep it. And that's a huge difference between a traditional delivery method, where under competitive seal proposal, if they were to propose this $1,778,180, and they complete the work and it only costs them $1,700,000, they get to keep the difference, whereas we get that difference back. They're still going to make money off this, I can guarantee you. If they, I'd be very surprised. But anyway, that is how this process works. And in that attachment, what they have on the third page, if you look at that, is a summary of the various types of work that will be done and the associated cost, and with the sum total at the bottom right-hand corner. And then the rest of it is there, what isn't included in there and some other miscellaneous information. And I hope that explains the whole, you know, what's happening in this Construction Manager at Risk process and how this is an example of what will be coming forward to you on a larger scale when they, we go through and finalize the design, which we're very close to 90% of the design completion. That will be completed and then go out to the marketplace in July. And all of those additions and renovations that we talked about as part of the bond program will then be priced and brought back to you in August for your consideration in the GMP Number Two. And that will hopefully complete all those proposals that we have to go out on.
Mr. Selby, I may have missed it, but did you mention that there's some scope at Harmony as well?
Yes, there is scope at Harmony. Not a whole lot. We're going to have to relocate some playground equipment and do some relocation of underground utilities. It's primarily what's going to be involved.
Thank you.
Should have read my own script.
So how does it work if the items that are not included in this come up? I guess do they just bring it, bring it to us?
Well, what will happen, this is, the scope of this work is really just focused on getting certain things done like I described before school starts. All the rest of the project will come back to you in August. And so the actual addition, cost for the additions, the cost for the renovations will all be part of the second package that will come to you. So anything that's listed in here is what's going to be included and anything outside of that scope, unless it's associated with this, would come back to the, to the board in August. Now, there is going to be some allowance built in here. As you go in and start moving things around or digging up dirt around buildings, you're going to find something you didn't anticipate. So there are, there is an allowance in there in the event that they run across something that was not anticipated. But that should be very minimal with the scope of this work. There will be, there's a possibility of some of that coming up, but there shouldn't be huge exposure and that'll come up whenever we do the actual additions and renovations. There'll be a lot more of that.
Any other questions?
Just curious, is the work at Sinclair going to be that much more detailed than at the other schools?
The, the reason the cost is so much greater there is that driveway and putting in a new fire hydrant. That's really the bulk of the cost at Sinclair right now. Whenever we get back into the second package or the GMP Two, it'll have some additional costs, but it'll be more in line with the rest of the schools.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. If not, Mr. Toscano, I believe we're ready.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of GMP Package One, proposed by Joris General Contractors in the amount of $1,778,180.
We have a recommendation by the superintendent to accept the Construction Manager at Risk Amendment for portable setups at Salado Intermediate, Sinclair Drive and other miscellaneous items. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor? I'm sorry, we have a motion. Anyone? Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Presses. Now, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item C, Proposals for Florisville Flooring Renovations at Education Support Center, Heritage Middle School and Legacy Middle School.
Trustees, we have planned for some flooring projects across the district at the Education Support Center next door, as well as Heritage Middle School and Legacy Middle School. The district has received proposals for those flooring renovations and a tabulation of unit pricing is attached. You can find it in your electronic packet on page 80. And at this time, I'd like for Mr. Morgan to review the tabulations with the board prior to making a recommendation.
Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. This tabulation sheet you see in front of you is a little bit different than what we normally present. Normally, we do a final price for the proposal. The reason why we did a unit pricing is because at the time of the publication of the proposal documents, the specifications weren't finalized at each of the locations. And so to get an apples-to-apples price comparison, we asked all of these proposers just to give us unit pricing. Based on that, if you look to the right side of the tab sheet, we got a total amount based on the specifications at the time. Now that, once the board approves, or if the board approves a vendor, we'll get a final negotiated price based on final specs from each of the locations. We do have a, in the proposal, a maximum price of $120,000. Based on the final specifications, I actually expect it to be less than that. And if we go, if the suggested or recommended vendor is approved, it'd actually be just over $111,000 based on their unit pricing.
So Mr. Morgan, you had three vendors in here and one of them has a note. Could you speak to that, please?
Yes, we actually had four proposals. One of the vendors didn't meet the timeline and so by law, we're not allowed to open any proposals that come in after the deadline, so it'll be returned to the vendor. One of the proposals, because we were doing a unit pricing, we also asked them to include demolition materials and haul off of all trash. One of the proposals did not include that in their pricing and so their unit pricing is a little bit lower, but it didn't meet the specifications of the proposal documents and so that bid was rejected.
And that one is the allied pricing?
Correct. They didn't include demolition of the, of the existing flooring and haul off of the existing flooring. And the other two did. Any other questions?
So your recommendation, Mr. Morgan?
After a review of all the proposals, by staff recommends board consideration of accepting proposed proposals submitted by Vector Concepts Incorporated for their flooring renovation projects at Education Support Center, Heritage Middle School and Legacy Middle School at the cost not to exceed $120,000.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of Vector Concepts for flooring renovations at the Education Support Center, Heritage and Legacy Middle Schools, again, at a cost not to exceed $120,000 as presented by Mr. Morgan.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the proposals as presented. Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Barrientos. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions?
Comments?
If not, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, 2018, actually, it's 2017, 2018 Student Code of Conduct.
Trustees, this is an annual requirement per education code. The Student Code of Conduct that's being presented for your consideration this evening is the exact same student conduct, Code of Conduct that was approved by the board last year. There were no revisions, but again, per statute, the board does need to approve the Code of Conduct each and every year. This should, the Code of Conduct for your information is on page 82 in your electronic packet and again, it is the same Code of Conduct that was approved by the board last year.
Anyone have any questions? So if memory serves me correctly, this last year, we had a fairly marked decrease in student incidents.
Sir.
Does everybody feel like that's a direct result of the Code of Conduct and other changes? What do we?
Probably the, the most significant impact comes from now being into our fourth year of school-wide behavior implementation, tiers one, two and three, as you're very familiar with. And so it's enabled us to be more clear about expectations and to reinforce the behaviors that we want to see more frequently and to recognize and reward those things so that we see more of those behaviors. In addition to that, we've been, for several years, adding restorative components to our disciplinary actions. So rather than jump straight to consequences, while consequences may be appropriate and may be administered, we invest in what is the educational piece here? What is the lesson that we need to teach and what do we need to work together with the child and their parent to hopefully develop? And so as a result of that, I think we're seeing pretty significant impact in, in particular, serious misbehavior infractions, but we expect to continue to see that downward trend of serious misbehavior out of, out of classroom placement, suspensions, in-school suspensions, DAP, AP placements and so. And then in addition to that, we're monitoring that very closely at the campus and district level. So each and every time, there is a disciplinary action that takes kids out of the classroom, you know, we're, we're taking a really close look at that in real time. So all of those things.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right, we're ready.
Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of the proposed Student Code of Conduct for the 2017, 2018 school years presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the Student Code of Conduct for 2017, 2018. Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Barrientos. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
If not, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Barrientos. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Before we move to adjournment, Mr. Toscano, do you have anything else?
Sir.
Anyone else? No? All right, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have multiple seconds to adjourn. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.